This is his wife.
Well.
Jimmy Pasquale.
Yes, my daughter.
Yeah, well, anyway. They had a daughter that was part of that, too. She was a rural male, let her carry it at one time. Married a...
No, I think she was my male carrier.
That's the daughter.
I make living on the downhill road. Plenty of money. Well, shit, I had the stipend. Had it in front of myself. You know, a million dollars for some crap all my money. You know?
All right, we are now live. Five, four, three, two, one. Is that my phone? Which phone is it? No, that's me and Robert.
Can I get a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff McKinley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Here.
Mr. Vice Chair Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
You have form, Madam Chair.
Item number two, adoption of meeting minutes, August 10th, 2020 meeting. Call up paper?
Aye.
Oh, it's not here in a little time. We made our approval.
Four zero one, very good.
Item number three, old business. Item A is Hickory Ridge proposed development plan revisions. Got new information here?
Yes, you've got a revised statement of intent. And then immediately, you have the same development plan plaque on the back. So that is being proposed. That language there is what was absent last time. And we thought something like that was needed. And it was produced, it's actually been changed once. And now, but it had not been reviewed by. So that's what we've got here.
Do we have any discussion?
We do have three folks for the public hearing.
Okay. Then we will open the public hearing for this.
Yes, in order, we'll be calling Steve Reeves, Mark Pritchett, and Tayan Pressley. And we have a brand new phone here, so we'll see.
Is it Steve Reeves or?
Right, Pritchett.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system.
That was Steve Reeves.
That was Steve Reeves. I guess we can try it one more time. All right, we'll try the other two. And then see if I can find maybe a different number in my phone. This is Mark Pritchett.
Hello, this is Mark.
Hey, Mark, this is Doug Courier. The public hearing for the Hickory Ridge amendment to the development plan. And you've got the floor. Again, if you've got your computer on, you might want to turn the sound down because there is a 20-second delay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you, Doug, and thank you, guys. Yeah, I had spoken with Michael Pressley. I have not spoken with Ken Felton or the Singleys. I think Michael and I had somewhat of the same sentiment. So Doug, as you well know, I gave you a call yesterday. And one of the things I did not understand from previous conversations with, I guess, Norman Allen, was that the land that was specified with Scott Lasseter and the two McGuire brothers was what was on the posting. And I kind of thought that that's what it specifically dealt with, was just the dissolving of their lines to create one major plaque for each of those guys. What Doug, you had told me yesterday was that it actually would roll over and apply to any of us who owned lots in there, which I own six, additional to the ones that we now live on up there. And Michael, I think, had two. And some of the specifications that they were, that you guys, I guess, will be ruling on will, as I understand it, Doug, will roll over to our lot, notwithstanding the things that Steve Reeves has come up with, which was apparently they could still, we can still sell our individual lots if we chose to do so in the future. And even though they're not two acres, people, we could still sell it as individual lots. And that's something that would be fine even with this new proposal. That was my biggest concern, was that would we be able to still do that? And then secondly to that, Michael Pressley, I know Tayan's going to be speaking, but Michael and I spoke, and he said his concern was that if this whatever was going to be decided was going to apply to, you know, perhaps the other landlords up there, that they would need to know about it. Because I think it was understood that it would only apply to the guys that were on that sign and the land parcel that was on that. Why would this be an issue? Because say if Michael Pressley wanted to put a building on his corner lot, for example, that would not be allowed under AR to put it in the back lot. So there's just a lot of questions like that that we were, this had unanswered, unanswered. And Michael and I talked, and I think it became somewhat of a consensus, not the whole of the process. No, we're not in any way against what they're doing, support it 100%. Just with the caveat that, you know, some of the things that we discussed were still going to apply, i.e., like, for example, being able to sell those lots as individual lots in the future if we chose to do so, even though they were not two acres, which is required by AR. And then just other, you know, considerations, like outbuildings and things of that nature. Just to get a clarification on that, if that makes sense. And I think that's pretty much my only concern. So I guess the question would be absolutely supportive with just some questions and some clarifications by the Board of Commissioners there tonight. And if they have any questions of me, or if I just need clarification, or if I just need to make that statement and then just watch the remaining court.
Do you, how do you want to handle this? I mean, I'm assuming they're all going to be talking about the same, same issue. Do any of you guys have questions for Mark?
Yeah, this is a little unusual in that if you have questions later, we would actually have to call them back again.
Correct.
So this is the best time to call them now. Can we call them again? Yes, we can. But obviously, you can see, it's a little different proceeding.
So, everybody, nobody has questions right now?
No, I think he was clear to me. I understand his concerns. Well, I will ask this. Mark, is there any decision that we could make or any effect that we may impose that would change your support of this request?
I don't think so, Commissioner Beatty. I think the thing of it is, I just, I don't think I knew it, and it may have been my own ignorance. And I apologize from the last time when Commissioner Allen called me. I was not under the impression that what was being decided on the plaque that was listed on the sign with Scott Lasseter, Dave McGuire, and John McGuire, I did not know that that had any impact on the other vacant lots up there that were not listed on the parcel being decided about. When Michael Pressley told me that, I called Doug. And Doug explained to me that it basically would just apply to everything up there that was originally under the PM with the caveats that there were some running covenants or maybe some restrictions that were allowable. For example, we have, I have six lots, they're still like 1.15 acres or what have you. I don't know that I'll even ever sell them. But let's just say if something ever happened to me and my wife wanted to sell those as individual lots. My understanding, according to Ms. Courier, is that it is allowable based on the fact that they were designated as those lots. And I'm not dissolving my lines of those lots. I'm believing that that's individual lots. And I'm the only other thing... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, and I believe that's correct. I guess my, what generated my question to you, Mark, was Mike Pressley, you gave the example of Mike Pressley wanting to put a shed on one of his lots, which may not be permissible if the zoning changes. If that were to be the case, would you, would we, would they lose your support? So you own six lots and you wanted to put, and you wanted to build something on one of those lots. I think what's going to happen is you're going to have to require residents to be built from the lot before you can, you'll have to have a primary dwelling before you can build anything else on that lot.
Yes, sir. And for me personally, that would not affect the, I just know that like Michael, you know, was under the impression that, just again, not that that's his plan, and I certainly don't want to speak for him, but just, I told him that would be something he would need to ask and to bring up, and I know Tayan's going to, you know, be calling me as well. So she might can clear that up better than I could.
Okay.
You know, if I were to put a horse stable, or if I wanted to put, I mean, a horse barn or what have you on one of those lots and do horses, you know, could I do it now? Would I be able to do it in the future? Again, would I plan to do that right now? I don't really have a plan for those lots other than just, we wanted to just go ahead and get them while we were up there. And I guess you're trying to know fully what it would look like in the future.
Would he be precluded from merging those lots?
Merging, no, that wouldn't be a problem even if they had AR zoning. That's not a problem.
Right, so he could, no, okay. So I don't, I think there's no impact whatsoever, to answer your question.
That depends on your decision.
Yeah.
You've got some conditions that I recommend. See where you go with that.
Okay.
Any, any other questions? All right, I think we're good, Mark. If we do come back to something, we will call you back.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, guys, so very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll try Steve Reeves again.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system.
All right, it is the right number, I'm not sure. All right, the next on our list is Tayan Pressley.
Hello, this is Tayan.
Ms. Pressley, this is Doug Courier with Upton County. You are live at our public hearing. And we're discussing the changes to the Hickory Ridge development plan. There are many questions, and we're ready for any comments yet.
Um, I'm sorry. Hold on just a second, I was just pulling out of my house. Um, I apologize for the delay. Okay, um, I know that we're requesting that all property owners do have property that would be affected by a plan included in the development, in the development review of the plan. So we're requesting that all property owners do have property that would be affected, be included in this review of the plan.
Okay. Do you have any specific questions outside of that that you want to ask?
Um, I do not.
Okay. The reason I was asking that is because with it, with how we're doing, having to do it right now, it's a little odd in how we have to kind of go about this. But I want to make sure you have opportunity to ask any questions that you had of us outside of your statement, so.
Well, my husband probably would, but he was unable to be on the call due to a prior engagement that he had with work that he could not get changed. So, um, I don't have, I don't have any specific question.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, hold on for me just a second. Let me, let, see if any of the Commissioners have any additional questions.
I'm trying to say if I understand.
Can you hear Commissioner Beatty?
Can you hear me, Tayan?
Yes, yes, sir.
So what you're requesting is for you, as a property owner, and the other property owners to have input, and I guess you do, that's the whole point of this process. I wish we knew what your input possibly was. Is there any way we could get ahold of Mike?
Um, no, sir. He is in a meet, in an out-of-town meeting right now. It would be later before you could. I mean, pretty much, we don't, I don't know. I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn or say the wrong thing, so.
Yeah. Well, is there any way we could get these concerns reduced to writing? And make table this? The last time we spoke, I thought this was going to be a pretty swift process. But now that it's apparently affecting all the adjacent property owners as well.
But it doesn't have to. It just, it depends on how put you decide. It doesn't have to.
Okay, I must have missed some of this, and I'm being brought up to speed. Okay.
If we, Mr. Reeves is probably the one who's been most involved with me on this. And we've had a couple of conversations just today. I just don't know why he's not answering. I talked to him probably in the last two hours or in the last one.
Okay.
We'll try him one more time.
Okay.
Tayan, we've been trying to get ahold of Steve Reeves before you. We've talked a couple of times, and he hasn't answered yet. So we did talk to Mark Pritchett. So. If there are no other questions, if we do have a question for you, we can certainly call you back. But we understand what, I think we understand what you're, what you're asking.
So like, everybody being contacted, what, Ken Felton, the Singleys, you know, I mean, I guess just so that everybody's on the same page as to what it actually means now that the property's been, you know, so much of it has been bought and it's kind of been rezoned. You know, I mean, I know that, I think our big one, our biggest concern is, you know, well, I don't really know. Good lord, I'm just like this, I'm so sorry. He's definitely going to have to do this. I was like, you got to be kidding me. But, you know, they, they don't know it may affect them to other people as far as, you know, future plans of things that they want to do or not have up here.
Yeah, right. For their property, how does this affect, how does this change affect them going forward?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, and unfortunately, this is Commissioner Beatty again. Unfortunately, due to COVID, in the era of COVID, we're having to modify the process. But there is a sign out there that says that a decision is going to be made on that property on a date. I'm assuming today being that date. And I guess it's incumbent upon the property owners adjacent that have concerns to address that with this governing body. Yet we have only heard from a couple.
Well, I'm not sure that they knew that it was going to impact that.
Well, that's, I guess, I guess the answer to that is, that's why you show up or get on the, get on the list to be heard, you know, to ask that question. Is this going to impact me? That's a pretty simple question. But unfortunately, it's not responsible, it's not necessarily the responsibility of the Board to answer that question.
Yes, sir. And I think that, I think.
Really, the question has to be posed by each individual property owner.
I think we thought that it was only going to affect the tracks that was with it.
And it might, depending on the decision. That's, that's one of the options that the planning commission, and then, and remember, this is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, so this is.
Wait, wait, do you, do you have a preference as to what this Board does? Do you know? In discussions with your husband?
I wouldn't be so comfortable answering that without him, so.
Okay.
I mean, I'm very sorry, he was just, not available yet. And we didn't care what they were doing directly, but the decision, the impact, so I think we thought that it was just impacting the lots that was with it.
Well, and I'm asking for clarification. When you say impact, it could have a positive impact or it could have a negative impact. I'm guessing that you're viewing this negatively, but I may be mistaken.
And I feel like that it possibly could affect us negatively.
To preclude you from doing what, perhaps?
Um, well, I, you know, I think one of the biggest concerns is what it would not prevent other people putting up here.
Okay.
So if one of your property owners sold their property, you want to make sure it does not undo what you have today? What protections you have today?
Um, that is correct. Under, I'm under the impression that, you know, we're not allowed to have a certain size, under a certain size house. Um, I don't think that you can just put some kind of garage or shed up. I don't think you can just have, you know, some kind Um, I don't think you can just have, you know, some kind of just basic dog pen or anything like that that's going to decrease the value of our property. And I don't, you know, we've got a big space across the front of us. I don't want to be looking out at a barn or a shed or a chicken coop, so.
Well, the, the decision of this board impacts that? I mean, what she's suggesting, what she's asking about is something called protective covenants.
I'm sorry that I didn't have on this.
Well, I'm, well, I'm interested in Mr. Courier.
One of the recommendations is that a default, without getting into the details of this now, is that we pick a zoning district that would be the default district if a rule doesn't exist otherwise.
Right.
So we would have to decide what that default zoning district is and look at what protections that does or does not afford. But that would be one of the several options that you could cover.
Yeah.
Well, in, in terms of protection, well, I'm getting into too much detail right now.
Okay, well, in my layman mind, the same, what she's talking about in regards to the footprint of the house has to be so large, or it has to have an attached garage or a detached garage, or you can't have a swimming pool, or you can't have a dog pen. Those are what generally constitutes protective covenant. And that's a contractual issue, which I don't think anything this board does will necessarily affect that.
That would be true.
Okay.
Unless you adopted those protective covenants as part of policy.
Well, there's law regarding protective covenants. I mean, they're only, they have a, and I only recently learned this through my life because of our next, one of our other items. They have like a 20-year shelf life. So protective covenants are written in 1990. In 2010, they're going to expire unless, um, somebody takes some kind of action. So that's a whole separate issue. Ms. Pressley, um, one of the four, uh, Mark Pritchett said something about Mike, Mike want to put a shed up on one of your lots. That possibly could be impacted by the decision of this board? Perhaps? Do you know anything about that?
He just said if he wanted to.
Oh, he, he was just.
It was just that.
Okay. As, as an example.
There wasn't that he wanted to.
All right, all right, I misunderstood. Okay, all right, I think I have a clear idea of where you're coming from.
So I think with the way that, just from my understanding of what I've ever heard, I guess, um, my husband discussing is with the, I guess with the way that, um, there, the way that it will be rezoned, we will be affected because, um, we will be clumped back into just the general county, um, ordinance thing, I guess, about what it costs. I'm not sure, but like, um. I'm, I'm sure I may be taking on in the wrong direction, but I, I know that, you know, we have, we have a lot that we could build a house on. But I think, um, we would be done back into, or clumped back into AR zoning, which is what the, the county is done that, if, as long as they're not like, I guess, in a neighbor pay community type that has the bylaws or.
Protective covenants, that's what they're called. Okay. Well, that's a, that's a, that, that's something we can discuss as a board.
And, and.
And I guess we will discuss that.
If they'll own, and, and that, that our lot's not two acres.
Right, you want to hold those, you, you want to make sure you hold those protections so that down the road, if you decide you wanted to sell your lot, somebody couldn't come back and say, well, it's less than two acres. No more.
That or, right, that or the fact that if we wanted to build a house for one of our daughters, um, and then left behind it.
Okay.
Um, and, and, and I do know that it is a concern with, um, I'm thinking with that AR zoning that it doesn't protect the type of, of structures that go up here as, that would affect how our community would as far as, you know, not having some type of guidelines on, like I said, a shed or a barn or a garage or something like that. Right now, you know, it's supposed to look like a house, so we wouldn't want some, you know.
Well, without getting, right, without getting into the weeds too much, again, those are protective covenants that were, were established perhaps when the subdivision was created.
Were we going to take it seven months ago?
It's called a protective covenant. And, and typically, they're established by the builder and every time he sells a lot, the, the owner agrees to the covenant. In other words, agrees to abide by these special set rules. They're not government imposed, they're imposed by a contractual agreement between the developer and the property purchaser, the, the property owner. It's called a protective covenant. Now, there's laws regarding that. I'm not familiar with them, so I, I can't speak to that. I was recently told that they do have a shelf life. And then the question is, who enforces that? Typically, it's the residential owner.
H.O.A.
Or an H.R.O., or what's, H.R.A., Home Owners Association, that gets involved in assuming the role of enforcing those.
Correct.
I don't know if you have an H.R.A. I know that I don't have an H.R.A., so.
We had a, um, the rules that we had that I got, so are those still good? And if they're not, you know, what, what can happen when, when it's rezoned, I guess, is the major.
Well, that's contract law, and my recommendation is, is you may want to speak to an attorney about that. But my spitball answer on that is, is that yes, they would still be good. Because it's a contractual obligation between you and your neighbors. Now, anybody that in the future buys another lot, it might be incumbent upon that development to ensure that they also sign this agreement.
H.R.A.
Uh, this protective covenant, so that they too would be restricted by it, if you understand what I'm saying? But the decision of this board or the decision of the upstate county government is probably not going to affect that. Because it's a contract, it's a contract between neighbors essentially.
It's entitled and so all parties are better informed and know how that they will be affected.
Okay, all right.
Then since it's just two of us up here that have, you know, called, I know that the others even know about it. One guy, he didn't even go up where, past where the, the thing that's in, you know, marked that it's going to be zoned, so he, he may not even know that this is going on tonight.
Okay, that's a, that's a fair question. I understand what you're saying, okay.
Any other input? Okay, um, I think, I think if, if you don't have any other questions for us, then we will try to contact Steve Reeves again to get his input. And then, are you online? Are you where you can see this online?
I'm not.
Okay. Because you could see, you could follow the meeting online live.
Yeah, you could watch the sauce.
To watch, right, to listen to the, to Steve's comments if we get ahold of him as well as Mr. Courier's presentation.
I can, I can hop online, I just did not make it home in time, I was right behind.
Do you know where to go to get online?
No.
Okay, you will go, you go YouTube and then look up Upton County Board of Commissioners and that will take you to the channel that we're being livestreamed on right now. With a 20-second delay.
With a 20-second delay, okay. Okay, yes, I see it, um, and I'm watching it while it's live. I'm afraid I'm going to be getting back with Steve.
All right. So we will hang up from you. Thank you for talking to us.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
And if for some reason you need to, if these are mute buttons, if something comes up that you feel it needs to be muted, you've got a quick button, yeah. All right, I double-checked both sources of this number and I've got the same number in both places, so hopefully he's okay.
Is that his cell phone number?
I think that it is.
Okay.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging.
Like I said, I've got the same number in my phone and here. I don't know if there's some other number I should be calling at. This is the number I've got, okay. Unfortunately, he's the main man, so he's the expert on this.
So do we, our options are to?
We can go into that right now?
Go into yours and then try him back again? And if not, if he doesn't answer, then maybe we table it till the next meeting?
And he and I just spoke a couple of times today, so I think I can at least advocate for his, at least part of his position.
I just want to give him the opportunity.
Is he a property owner up there?
No, he's a surveyor for property owners.
Oh, okay, okay.
He's the one that did this plan.
Did this plan, okay, okay. Well, um, okay. You going to close the public?
Uh, yes.
Or leave it open? Or?
We'll leave it open because when he gets through, he'll try to raise.
If we try him again, so let's leave the public, public hearing open?
Some of this will be a refresher, but it's probably important to explain it. Back when this was proposed, it was proposed as a unified development, and that's the PM, mixed, the DM is mixed use. So you have the golf course and either commute, the, the commercial type development with golf course, and then, of course, the residential areas. There is a development plan. This is key because PM doesn't have like AR, R2, all that. It doesn't have a, a list of requirements and limitations or things you can and can't do. It's why you get to write, that's the purpose of the PM, you write the zoning this. And I would say basically, up to now, we really didn't have any changes in the development plan other than Russian ministries and North East Church took some of that property, but they didn't stay in the PM. They eliminated PM and went to AR zoning, and then they got the church special exception and recreation. So they just left PM. All these folks are still in that unified development PM. Part of the development plan is the graphic you saw, the map. The other is what we're sort of missing, and this is why we've got an issue, is the text. What can you do? What may you not do? What are the requirements? What are the limitations?
So we don't have a copy of what she was talking about?
Well, what she's thought, if you're talking about the protective covenants, that was part of your packet, is we now have found those.
And that's outside of our.
But that is outside our purview.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what could happen right now is somebody comes in for a permit for, somebody I talked to said a barber shop, we're going to issue the permit. I have no basis to say no to a barber shop up there. Now, every time we issue one of those permits, if they want to sue those people, and that's where we are, is every, they, you're right, they enforce those covenants. And Mr. Reeves could probably tell you those covenants that you received are amended covenants and, you know, how up to date those are, and that's a legitimate question.
Well, as Hickory Ridge as an entity does not exist anymore, does it?
It does in zoning, yes.
In zoning, but.
And that's our, our only issue, yes.
Okay, right. This other stuff is a contractual obligation between these neighbors.
Well, the question is, is what rules are we either going to create now because we don't have any by the fact that we've got somebody changing lots now and we don't really have anything to say about that? But that's change in the development plan. It's clear in the PM zoning, when you change the development plan, which is what they're doing, they're taking lots and combining, and there's allowances for minor changes and you would be here for that. These are pretty substantial, you're eliminating roads, you're taking huge drafts and combining. So this is sort of our first entree into, okay, we need to look at this. So from a government standpoint, we understand it's a PM zoning, that unifies those folks unless they all separate and start getting other rezoning or zonings. We do not enforce their restrictive covenants. I have skimmed them and some of them could be zoning requirements, but some of them are more restrictive than anything Upton County would ever do, and that would be something that would have to be decided. So right now, we've got no rules for what goes on up there, other than the very limited ones. And if you have your large plot or the small one, there's some setbacks, that's part of the development plan that are different from AR, for instance. And you have that lot size. Normally, AR would require two acres. The development plan, which has been accepted in the past by the county, allows for one. So that's not really a concern because that's taken care of. It's all the other stuff that you all deal with in zoning that isn't even covered, that if somebody comes to us and says, I want a permit for a 1,008 square foot house, we're going to issue the permit. That's not allowed by their, their protective covenants. In the strictest, let's go to what, you know, it's the heart of what Steve was talking to today and sort of what I was.
Is it allowed by the development plan?
1,008 square foot house, no. Well, it's not a development plan. Development plan doesn't address it, their restrictive covenants address it.
Restrictive covenants got to be 1,800 square feet or a minimum of 1,400 square feet on a two-story bit.
Question lies, and it is not a question for this board, are the restrictive covenants even enforceable at this point? Hickory Ridge as an entity, it no longer exists. It went bankrupt, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, this protective covenant, and I'm spitballing here, I'm just supposing, was an agreement between Hickory Ridge Incorporated, whatever, and the purchasers of the individual lots. And so these agreements, so basically, they each agree, and so they're all in agreement with one another, and that's what becomes a protective umbrella for the community that somebody can't come in there and buy, build a thousand-foot, square, square foot home. With Hickory, there is no H.R.A., right?
Correct, that's what I didn't know.
So there's nobody to enforce a protective covenant.
Well, the individual property owners would have to do it. That's why you form an H.R.A. because you all get together and enforce your rules.
Right.
So, so right now, they're all, they're all living peacefully up there with no issues.
Well, that's exactly, that's exactly right.
It just takes one person to throw a, to say, I'm going to put a go-kart track up here on the 180 lot.
Well, let me ask you this, for the PM, the PM stuff was really pretty lax, was it not? That if they wanted to put a, a mini market up there, they, they could? They wouldn't, there was some?
Well, if there was any text that helped us out, I'm unaware of that. I don't know if there was agreement that somehow the protective covenants took care of everything, it's just, that's way before our time in.
Well, see, protective covenants also expire.
Well, but I guess, for instance, this, the set that I sent you in your packet is amended. amended, does that mean that they were revived?
Probably.
Anytime it amended, it's gonna extend the date.
Exactly, and maybe Steve could help us with it. These are the options, let me start with, if Steve were here, this is what he would ask you to do. Okay, he has specific property owners that, yes, are part of the development plan, but they're trying to do something, they wanna combine lots, eliminate the road, and there's a text where it describes what they're going to do, that statement of intent. Now, really, the statement of intent should be for the whole community, this one is not. This is just for those particular lots, these particular owners wanting to do what they wanna do. So if Steve Reeves just wants you approve the development plan, approve that statement of intent, my owners can do what they want, yes, that's, there's a lot of questions out there, but at least my owners who hired me to do this, they're taking care of what they want to do, because we, apparently they agree, it is a change in the development plan, the development plan being whatever text there is out there, which isn't much, and that, the physical platte that we saw earlier.
Who came up with the original development plan?
There, that was like three owners, you know, I think two of them went under, and then the third one, all three went under, I guess.
Who came up with this development plan?
I think this was based on what the historic plan was.
Right.
The platte, and then the McGuires and Mr. Lassiter came up with this revision, because they own that property, they wanna make the changes. When they approached my office, they said, "Wait a minute, this is part of the development plan, you have to go through this board and the board of commissioners, because PM has unified you as a development." If you, you know, at some point they all broken up, it would be different, but there's still that PM development.
Let me ask you this, what, how is this different from, and it's probably because it's in subdivision, but how is this different from me owning two lots on Baker Brett Road, or buying, and then coming in and saying, "I wanna merge these to where it's one piece of property"?
It's different because all these are tied by one development plan, and anytime you change that development plan, you have to seek permission through us. You only have to go, you don't have to talk to any of your neighbors, what you do doesn't directly affect them.
Well, see, that's why my original, my question was, the original development plan. So, he could come up with another development plan and say, "I wanna change," it seems a little far-fetched, that some, a second or a third entity could come in and modify a development plan, the original entity came up with.
Well, and that's why I was saying, it depends on what you recommend.
And what's their standing to do that?
Well, the standing is that they have to come to this body and to the board of commissioners, so the fact that we're a public body, we do things in the public, we advertise, there's a notice that goes out.
So this is a subsequent request, the original development plan.
So, are these, if I'm wearing, I think I've got the number right, it's going from 23 lots that these three people own, combined, the 23, down to seven?
I don't have the number in my head, what you can do is you can see where the dash lines...
That's seven, it's pretty something lots.
Those dash lines disappear, and you can see the roads disappear.
So, are they wanting to take their seven lots and go pull them out of the...
They would have to rezone to do that.
Okay, so they're wanting to stay within the PM?
Right, and what that means is this plan here and whatever text, the concern is, is that, again, what I talked about, you come in for a permit, there are probably a million permits we're gonna say yes to, because we don't have that underlying zone.
Restriction.
So what we suggested was, now this is where the other comments come up, "Well, wait a minute, now you are affecting us." If all you do is approve the change in that map and the text that's on the other side, the only people affected will be the McGuires and maybe Mr. Lassiter's property, and nobody else is affected, because it's just a combination of lots, and that's all it is. You could do that, that's one of your options, just do the most narrow thing possible, but there's a whole lot of problem out there that's gonna, could potentially, come home to roots, and that's the fact that all these ordinances that I'm talking about are amendments or applications for building permits that, hey, we wanna build this, well, we don't have the rules, okay. I mean, the default in government is, if, I don't have a rule against it, I have to say okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's the way it's gonna work.
Well, that's the most legal option for us, that wouldn't create an issue.
Approve what's on the sheet of paper tonight.
Just approve what's there right now.
And that only affects those three people and the...
And it doesn't affect anybody else that's living up there.
Does it change anything else that's up there?
Just property lines.
I don't have a problem with that. And let me say one thing, because they don't have an HOA, which would be the enforcement body for these protective covenants that everybody seems to be expressly concerned about. Maybe they need to get an HOA, and maybe this is the alarm bell going off to say, this is, it's really not up to the Upson County Planning and Zoning Department to enforce their HOA, or their protective covenant.
Actually, but we will be putting it in jeopardy, that's what I'm saying, is with no rules...
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, well, that's a decision, that was one of the options, is either...
Simply because...
It's in jeopardy technically, today.
Mine's in jeopardy.
Yes.
Right?
But these folks right here, but...
Well, there's a whole set of rules for your property, government rules, there's no rules for...
Well, I'm feeling...
There's no rules today.
There is also a protective covenant that would...
So we're not undoing anything or any jeopardy that they're in today.
All we do is changing lines.
We're changing lines to bring seven lots.
If all you do is approve, that, right. But if you decide, well, wait a minute, in the limited ways that they have on that plan, the default is an AR or an R2 rule, then yes, you're affecting everybody there, because if it's not, and then the whole issue, and this is where it could get more complicated, and we'd have to ask the owners, wait a minute, they have rules, a zoning code to some degree in the covenants I gave you, they could say, okay, let's change those covenants to a PM zoning district, we wanna take all those rules and insert them into PM. Okay, that could have been one of your options, is either default an AR or default an R2, pick a zoning district, or take the protective covenants, turn them into a zoning ordinance, that could be, but now, we, yes, we wouldn't wanna do that on our own, we'd wanna consult with them, and I haven't studied those covenants, I skimmed them, I said, okay, there's some stuff in there, like house size, those are things that are commonly in a zoning district, but that, no. Now, is that what the McGuires and Mr. Lassiter want? No, they initiated this, but I think only now do they realize this really sheds light on a bigger issue, it doesn't help us a bigger issue, but, you know, there are other people who potentially are...
I just don't know, but it's this board's responsibility to resolve their issue. By some ad hoc method of inserting rules, I mean...
Well, and that's a policy decision.
What they need to do is they need to hire an attorney and do a little exploring and maybe come up with an HOA, and, you know, an entity that can enforce, because right now, they're all living peacefully and apparently in agreement with these, and under the impression that they are protected by the restrictive covenant, they may or may not be, depending on its legal standing.
Well, I think some of them didn't even know they existed.
Which is pretty common, especially common in a development that goes...
Well, I mean, they didn't know that these covenants existed on their property today, until these conversations started with Mr. Reeves and myself.
And what's your recommendation?
Even without, even with us resolving these lines and putting them into these larger tracts, we're not affecting that situation, that their covenant situation.
No.
So, that's still something, that's still something that's, that's under their covenant agreement with purchasing the property, it doesn't affect us.
One of the options is to take a set of rules and insert them into...
Yeah, but then that's, that's more government...
That's more government.
That's more covenant, you know, hammer down on them, and that's not what, what this is about, it's just about us approving, changing these lot sizes, and them still having their covenants.
And if somebody gets offended by something their neighbor does, by putting up a thousand square foot home, it's really up to them to resolve that.
But that should be resolved through an HOA and their, and their covenants up there with the, with the new property owners.
I agree.
Because that's, it should have been on their, I guess, on their deeds, in those things, in their property deeds, that this is part of your property purchase, that you require these things.
Had the original plan worked out and those golf course lots sold like hotcakes, you know, and everybody would, you know, that'd probably be a thriving little community if every place went belly up, and, you know, the golf course no longer exists, you know, and, well, it's a whole different situation, but you do have property owners up there that, but it's, I don't know that it's all a responsibility as a board to fix that for them, and, and to try to put rules on them, because we're gonna get varying reactions to that.
Well, we would wanna do it in consultation with them, but actually, like I said, we will, and again, as long as they're all working in harmony, everything's fine, but if you get somebody says, "No, it's my property, and I wanna do X..."
And we burn that bridge when we get to it.
Well, I'm a planner, which means I take ahead. So I'm anticipating what could happen.
I know, but the shock factor of what has been proposed, apparently, I mean, based on ultimately Ms. Presley's, you know, after what we were able to needle out of her, you know, because, you know, Mike was the one that...
Yeah, he's the one I've been talking to on the...
Yeah, right, and he's the one that's got, got a handle on it, and, but it was thrust upon her, but the impression I was left with was they're scared of any change, even one imposed by the county.
Well, and they may, I think they're even scared by their own restrictive covenants, because they don't know what's in them. They said that, I've been...
Well, right.
So it's not just if we impose a default zone, but...
Again, perhaps they need to seek legal counsel, because those protective covenants probably are not enforceable, likely.
Mr. Reeves might have gotten a opinion on that today.
Yeah, can we try and get ahold of him again?
You can try one more time.
Are you all right with that, Madam President?
Madam President?
You've been promoted.
Hold that up, put shirt.
I mean, once again, double-check my numbers.
Why should not the rest of the lots not mentioned in this presentation be included in that also?
Well, if you did something other than the minimum, they would be, but if all you're gonna do is the minimum, it's just gonna affect these properties and go forward.
So later on, are these other folks gonna come back and request that we do the same thing for them?
Maybe.
Wouldn't it make it a lot easier for us and for those folks also if we made that inclusive? Or if they came back and said, "Let's include everyone in that lot"?
But all we're doing, all they've asked, all they've asked us to do is to approve the rezoning lines of these lots, correct?
So they've not looked at the text description.
They've not asked...
The property lines, the property lines.
Basically, the property lines.
Yes, yes.
And to merge lots together, that, I seem to be honest, I have a problem with that.
I understand, and certainly I can appreciate that, but if I'm looking at Lot 31 and 33, what's the effect that gonna have on Lot 32?
Depends on who owns Lot 32.
I beg your pardon?
It depends on who owns Lot 32.
At this point, it's...
He'd be involved in this process?
At that point, it's not...
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, those McGuires aren't involved.
Well, again, perhaps that is a function of the HOA, which they don't have. That was kind of the question that I had, you know, that, you know, this is a whole new development plan.
But is that what this process is all about, is to give whoever owns Lot 32 the opportunity to show up here and say yes or no, or I like it, I don't like it?
Well, he may show up next meeting and sound all like...
Well, but that's, is that...
Well, I think what Ms. Presley was suggesting is that if, you know, short of just doing the most narrow thing, which you can assure will not directly impact her, or even, well, indirect impacts or something else, but if it won't directly impact her, she just wants to make sure that everybody's included, so you would anticipate that there would be at least one or two community meetings, maybe one just the residents, and maybe they would bring in maybe somebody from the county in another meeting or two to discuss that. You know, Mr. Reeves was legitimately concerned, because this thing seems to be going on and on, but I think that's because they have, as you now understand, a very narrow focus about what they wanna do, they're not real concerned about all these other issues that, you know, wait a minute, that indicates some things up there, but, and thought of, you know, once this is dissolved and you're changing...
Well, you know, this very well might be a, is this a violation of this protective covenant that we've been talking about? Can you, under the protective covenant, merge lots? Are we helping somebody violate a contract?
As you said, we don't care, because we don't enforce that.
I understand, but this, as an action, an entity, are we helping somebody violate a contract?
Well, I have not studied those, you know, those restrictive covenants, I don't know.
Well, it's possible that we're helping, that by approval, they end up violating the contract that they've entered into, and we've allowed them to do that. Imagine that's a part of the lawsuit.
If I can suggest something, why don't we try and Mr. Reeves would have, and if he don't ask us what's tabled is?
Yes.
I have one other question before we go, why, you mentioned earlier the road, what's gonna happen to the road?
Oh, you can see, those are eliminated, they're absorbed into the lots. You can see the dash line, that's where the roads are aligned, where it's a solid line, the road will stay, you can see, basically, the road continues here, that's gonna continue to stay, because they need connectivity, where they're combining some of the lots, they've gotta have a minimum access to a public street, and, so that's this access point here, but you can see, see these dash lines here, that means that part of the road all disappears.
Where your pointer is right now, go back up to the road on top, that, no, come to my right.
My left.
No, your, your, alright, your left, your left.
Yeah, that's my left.
Alright, now you right or left now?
Well, the fact of the matter is, if you're looking at the map, you're right, this is right, okay?
Okay, but across the top of that, that road right there, what's gonna happen to that road?
It appears those are dash lines, so that apparently part of it at least disappears, but again...
So, that road's gonna disappear?
Well, it looks like you've got a little bit, that, that's there, this is where we need Steve Reeves to educate us.
That's Trent Jones circled right there, that...
Does that road, is that, is that, or is that road currently in existence?
That is, that is called Trent Jones circled sign.
Yeah, yeah.
That's already named, and it's circled around.
Okay.
It's not showing it on that drawing up there, but it is, it is on your paper, that's this one.
Okay.
Well, it becomes a driveway.
Well, if you see, all the lots, all the lots around it are disappearing, so that road's gonna disappear. You can see, all, all those lines are dissolved, every one of those lots, so it'd be one great big twenty-something, that's in the description you had before, I think it's a 27 acre lot or something like that. Alright, Madam Chair, do you wanna try Mr. Reeves again now?
Sure.
If you'd like a motion.
Yes, if you would, I'll be happy.
Have you had a motion on the table?
I did not.
No, he said to try to reach Steve again.
You'll speed this process up a little bit.
Yes, this is our, the third time's gonna be the charm, one way or the other.
Okay, from Mark Pritchett, that was a proposed road, not a road. I'm getting texts from Mark, so that was a proposed road, not a road.
It's a good exception right now.
Yeah, Steve?
Hello?
Well, we've got you, good. I haven't been following...
I can see you call, but I can see you calling on YouTube, I was not getting a call. I think I told you before last time, I'm in Black Kansasville.
That's a problem. That may be the problem.
Well, we got you this time, and you understand where we are in the meeting, and you have the floor. Well, we got you this time, and you understand where we are in the meeting, and you have the floor.
Yeah, okay. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, first and board members. I apologize for not being here, I heard here, but I love getting calls. Anyway, I think something is concerned with this. The major problem with this is we do not have a copy of the previous development plan to know where to start and what was here. My owners, I think, as you've already discussed, are not wishing to change things out there, they're just wishing to combine some lots. That is not prohibited in the covenant, nor do I believe is it prohibited in your ordinance for combining and making bigger lots in the subdivision. There is protective covenants, actually, two sets, one that was recorded in 1997 with the original development, and then a later set was recorded in 2003 that actually, you know, affects the property now. My understanding, all the property out there would be subject to those existing covenants. As far as the timeframe, in the covenant, it's, 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 it's to be forever, as Georgia law allows. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know exactly if Georgia law allows the covenants to be in effect, but until they're overturned or thrown out, they're still in effect. Now, all the property owners out there could, as a whole, and change those covenants and re-record them, you know, if they wanted to change the conditions. My current owners are not asking at this time to change any of the current conditions, I said they're just wanting to combine the lots for, in order to obtain a building permit and, you know, possible transfer, title, or sale of one of the tracks there. As far as getting in the, changing the rest of the lots out there and everything like that, I think that's my only disagreement. With Mr. Doug is that it's sort of a major change versus a minor change, and there's really no definition of which is a major change and which is a minor change into the development plan. My thoughts were combining lots into bigger lots, it could be a minor change. But that's my opinion and not the opinion of Doug, so... That being said, like I said, my, my, I just wouldn't combine a lot if we get into this because of your ordinance and a major change, it has to be approved by the commission and the board of commissioners, or any other subdivision. We would just come in there, combine the lots, and Doug would sign off on it in a normal subdivision, but, and you know, this is not a normal subdivision. But in those covenants, it does restrict, you know, no commercial businesses, it restricts the how it's eighteen hundred square foot minimum, or fourteen hundred on the first floor, if you have two floors, you know, has other few other restrictions, but it does say you cannot sub kind of lots and smaller lots, but not with diggers from the minority into bigger lots. As far as anything else, like, most of this other stuff just come up because of having to change the plan. It was not my intention of my clients to change anything out there that was already or requirements, division or on their property, which I'm not sure if they could, if they wanted to, because like I said, all the lots that were previously planted in Hickory Ridge, Phase One, should fall under those covenants, at least until they expire or rule, you know, eligible or whatever, so... Other than that pattern, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions on it. But my, our, our only goal with this originally was to combine, first goal, they were selling property in Pike County, the tract in Pike County, and because it did not have road frontage, it was gonna be combined with the property in Hickory Ridge, because it does have road frontage. And that would meet the requirements for Pike County in order to sell the bigger tract. And all this other just came out this way.
Do you guys, you have any questions?
No, please answer.
If we're not changing, if we're not changing, affecting any of their covenants, and their coven, part of the covenants is that they're, that each new lot should have no more than one permanent single, single family residence on it, no matter if that thing goes to a seven acre, a seven acre tract or whatever, see, if it's a single lot, they can only put one single residence on it. He said that there's no business, you know, no commercial, commercial business on that. So if we're not changing any of those covenants, and we're not affecting anybody else...
Yeah, these covenants specifically say businesses prohibited.
Yeah, they're not, yes. Is he still on the phone? Yeah, he is.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not.
Before we get into discussion, maybe we need to close the public.
I was just saying, before we clear that, before we clear that that was what it was saying, he said that there was no business, that's all.
Joel, any questions?
No problem.
Okay. I think we're good, thank you for, for jumping on the call and clarifying some of that for us.
All right, well, thank you for keep driving back.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, bye-bye. All right.
Can you close the public?
Um, yes, that was the only three, right?
That's it, yeah.
So we will close the public hearing. Any other comments, questions, based on that?
I think we need to do the amendment, which is what specifically we're being asked to do, which is combine the lots. We combine the lots and leave everything else alone.
Combine those lots and hold them accountable to these commissions?
Yeah, they have to be held, yeah.
It should have been on their deeds when they purchased those lots, or those covenants, so we're not, we're not eliminating that situation. We're actually creating a different situation that even on their big tracks, they can still only put...
So do we make it part of that requirement that in combining those lots, creating those lots, that they must have these covenants as part of their new deeds?
It should be, I mean, it should remain as part of their deeds. It was under, it was under deeds as purchased, and it should remain as part of their deed. The covenant should still, the covenant should still be attached to their new dated properties, regardless of the size.
I agree with you, and they should be stipulated by...
I mean, I get that it's supposed to be, but I'm saying...
When the deeds were drawn, that, when the deeds were drawn, that they should still be maintained as part of the original covenant of the property, and then that doesn't affect anybody else up there, you know? And it still is, they can't put a business up there, they can only put one residence on the property, and they can't do shabby shacks, mobile homes, or anything else that tie into everybody's worry about. It still protects them.
Do we know whether, I'm assuming, but I would like to know for sure that his clients have signed this protective covenant.
Doesn't really matter once we, if we...
Well, I understand, but if they've already signed it, they're already obligated to it.
Well, if they purchased them, I should...
Even if they only signed it in regard to one lot, once they combine them...
It's there.
They're obviously obligated to buy it.
Yeah, if they purchased it, they're obligated to.
Right, same to him. I don't think you can buy property up there without it.
I don't think so. Do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion that we accept these, except that as proposed, with, with the provision that the new deeds are drawn up, that the present covenants are still attached to those new deeds as the property is combined.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can ask five zero?
Yes. I would like to make a matter of public record that somebody up there needs to... I would encourage somebody up there in that subdivision to investigate constructing an HOA for the government, but that's only a recommendation back to the property owner. That's not an issue for the board.
All right. Item, item B, amateur radio towers.
If I can make a recommendation, item B, C, and D under the whole business, I would like to move that to the bottom of the agenda continuing.
Any issues doing that?
Ah, sorry.
Okay. So that will take us to item four, new business. Application for amendment of a special exception, SPX 2020-04. Margie McDaniel, 4429 Woodland Road, parcel 026012. Do we have anybody for public?
We do, we have the applicant, Margie McDaniel, and then there's one other person. Two other people who we will call.
Okay. So we will open the public hearing. Call this right here.
Ms. McDaniel?
Hi, I'm White.
Thank you.
Max, do you have a light bulb? I don't have a light bulb. That light bulb go off yet? Do you have a light bulb over there? Okay, thank you. Hello?
Ms. McDaniel, this is Doug Courier.
Yes, Doug.
All right, you are live at the public hearing to discuss your application. If you'd like to make a statement, and the board members may have questions for you. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. McDaniel?
Hey.
Hi there, you can go ahead with your comments that you have for us.
Yes, ma'am. I was hoping to get, you know, permits to start, move my store over there so I can have some relief over here. And I think it would be good for Upton County. I don't know what y'all think, but I, I think it would be a good income for Upton County. And I'd like to put a store in my, in a living place over there.
Okay.
Do you already have a, a plan, a plan drawn for the store and for the facility? Do you have an architect design?
I think I have an architect design, you know, Mr. John decided Home Depot has designed it for us. And it's like a thirty-six by sixty, and then two bathrooms, and then about a fourteen by twenty patio for the equipment.
What's your, what's your plan for your Talbot County property?
For my Talbot County, uh, this right here, I'm just gonna keep it for my personal, my house and my, uh, the campground, you know, I have permanent campers here, so I have to keep that for them, I can't throw them out. So this is main thing that I'm doing over here in Talbot County. I won't be running the canoe round in the community till I'm here.
Well, ever since the bridge was constructed down there, I know your, your business footprint was reduced somewhat. What is your, what, I guess, what is your long-range plan to move part of the business from Talbot County over to the Hudson County side?
Yeah, so the main business I'm moving over there, but I'm just, all the thing I'm keeping over here is just my, uh, permanent, you know, residence.
In campsite.
Just here.
Okay.
And I'm hoping to, you know, to get, I'm so tired and I like to retire and I like to get back over there, so I can even sell it and lease it, you know, out.
You would like, you would like to get the convenience store and the paddle house on the Hudson County side so that you could lease that, or the, what's on the Talbot?
No, on the, the Hudson side, that's why I'm trying to move over here so I can have rest over here, you know?
Yeah.
Move business over there.
Well, what has you, I'm resting? Is Talbot County giving you some problems?
Oh, no, no, I just want a rest, my fair personal, since my husband died.
A house from the business.
Uh-huh, oh, I see, okay. I see, that makes sense, all right.
Yeah.
She wants someplace to go, why, okay, why don't she build a house in Talbot County? Okay. All right, so you're gonna, you wanna move the canoe round, the convenience store? Okay.
That's it, yeah, all that over there.
Ms. McDaniel? I have a question, my name's Joel Fitz. Who owns the road that you're calling your access road on the progressive commercial drawing that you sent us? Who owns that road?
We do, Max, I'll let land files.
Okay. All right, tell me about the boat ramp, evidently, there's a boat ramp, no time for a...
That's a public, public boat ramp over there. But you know where, I think Mr. Doug had, you know, picked the thing, you know, where the little covered bridge is that when Walmart was first built, they had to build that covered bridge, and that's where we'll be taking out our canoes when the little creek comes in, the Reeves Creek.
Yes, ma'am, so that, that boat ramp is not yours?
No, sir, that's, that's public boat ramp, that won't be, we won't be accessing that.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Okay, tell me about sewage, waste of water.
Uh, I've got Mr. Stewart, Brandon Stewart, was a soil engineer, soil scientist and all. That would be a fifty-tonne can, well, that's dug up there, which has already been, you know, surveyed down the life and completely protected. And the, some, you know, some of that deal will be graded down for the school or frontage.
Do you have, do you have elevations, do you have, do you have elevations on that property? High point, low point, middle point?
Is she still there?
Ms. McDaniel? Ms. McDaniel? Hello?
Apparently, it's not a purpose, is it? We're gonna try to contact her again there, Doug.
Hello, you there, ma'am?
Yes, we are.
I missed, I think Fitz was talking to something and I lost the connection.
Yes, ma'am, do you have grades on that piece of property, high point, low point?
Uh, no, sir, I think on that big sheet that Mr. Stewart gave me, it may be some high points, low points on it, so that he gave me a big map.
So that we don't have...
So that, uh, we don't have that?
Pl- pl- you're talking flood plain, flood plain? The only thing you've got is this is the flood plain map, so you.
I know I've got a letter from, uh, I just got it today, uh, to have my, uh, the drainage and stuff for the septic and the well, so I gotta call in to Mr. Stewart to give me that to give me down.
Who's Mr. Stewart?
He's the soil scientist. The en- you know, and I don't know if I have to have an engineer and all, but, uh, that on the, uh, I got the letter up top that they said to give, get that for me, so on the, uh, drainage on the, uh, septic.
Well, uh, how close to the river are you going to be?
Oh, we'll be way off the river, it's way up there, you know. From the, where you enter into the, the drive for the public ramp, it'd be way, it'd be on that other side toward Thomasville.
I understand, so where you're taking out your canoes, where is that at?
You know where, what I'm saying, the canoe, where the covered bridge is, that's where the creek comes in.
Where is that at?
The creek comes into the river, right there, we'd be going up in there under the covered bridge, taking out the canoes.
Okay, and you will be building something there?
We won't be building anything there, we'll just pull them out there, you know, we're gonna be building up at, close to the road.
So you're not gonna build a, a boat ramp or anything to help you get the.
It won't be a boat ramp, we're just gonna come up the creek.
Canoe slip, a canoe slip, slip.
Yeah, no, no building there, you know, up, up under the covered bridge.
So you're not gonna build anything on the bank of that creek?
Oh, no, sir.
So you're not, you're not gonna be disturbing any soil, I, I noticed that you have, uh, there was something from Flint River Keepers, apparently they were a meaningful, have you been in touch with Flint River Keepers?
Uh, no, I haven't been in touch with Gordon, he said, they, it's what now?
Flint River Keepers?
Yes, the Gordon, Gordon Rogers, what, what am I supposed to do on this?
Well, I, I don't know, have you been in touch with them, have you discussed your plans with them? I know they are highly protective over that river.
You know, I'm sure Gordon, Gordon was interested in buying, so I'm sure, yeah, with the Flint River Keepers, Gordon Rogers.
What about a, uh, would she be required to have some type of environmental impact study done or anything like that?
Not going to wear it.
Okay, 'cause I know when they built that boat ramp, they had to have, federal money.
I'll be wearing, I won't be on the river on building, mine be up at the, you know.
Well, you would, you would agree that your activity does impact the river, would you not? I mean, you, your whole pitch is.
Won't be what you say impact, it'd be just like it's doing now, 'cause the people that can't get on that side now take out the, the boats there.
I, well, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, uh, on the Talbot County side, you have a nice boat ramp and a, a concrete, you know, to minimize the impact of mud or, uh, stuff, uh,
Yes, sir.
runoff getting into the river, but you have no plan for that on the Hudson County side?
Oh, no, sir, no, sir. You know, they just follow the river until it comes to the creek, can come up the creek with that, the boat, there's nothing to be disturbed.
So they're gonna take out on the creek and up the river.
Well, I understand that, but that's still impactful to the environment, that's, that's my point. How many?
Not that it impacts to the environment, I won't be disturbing anything.
Well, how many customers do you have a month?
Oh, I'll have, oh.
I would think hundreds, and so hundreds, hundreds of feet, hundreds of feet tromping and going through the woods and it would im- it would impact, you know, that's what makes a trailer trail, so, uh, how much impact is, I, I, I'm just curious, I'm not saying that that's necessarily a bad thing, but sometimes you're required to take certain actions to mitigate that impact, especially if it's a negative impact, if it's putting soil or causing soil erosion or, you know, uh, contrabid, a fish kill.
And I said none of that would be disturbed, sorry.
Well, sounds like it's a possibility, so, all right. Ms. McDaniel, Joel Fitz again, I have another question for you, at one time, I remember there was a violation on that piece of property. Is that violation still in existence?
What violation was it, I'm not aware of it.
There's a permanent trailer fixture that was located on that property, and you folks came before planning and zoning, I don't remember what the date was, but it's been years ago, is that trailer that permanently fixed on that piece of property still there?
It's not been permanent, there's never been anything permanent, we asked if it could be turned into, you know, a campground, but when y'all said it's just a hundred and twenty days, they didn't want to stay, you know, you know, be a permanent fixture, never, nothing was ever permanent by it.
So there's, uh, there is not a trailer on that piece of property which has been underpinned?
No, sir, no, sir.
It's not there now?
Oh, it's, it's never been by it, it was passed by a, well, after a month. It was trying to get it, you know, taken care of, it's been a hundred and twenty days, you can take out and move back in. That's the one that had the camper over there.
Where did y'all want it?
Did that, you know, so we just tried to fix it.
This picture right here, right there.
I guess it was ever permanent by it.
You have another sign on that?
That's what, you're talking about this right here?
I guess his question is, was there, was there ever a trailer over there somebody was living in? See, that's right here. Then we lost her again. See, that right there, there were trams sitting right there, it'd been underpinned back in the day, something violation. I guess you know, Doug.
Well, I, the photos, I took those photos for.
Yeah, there you are, and they say I'll shoot it.
Right now, there is no permanent, there were no trailers, temporary or permanent, on that side of the river, okay, I took my.
Okay, nothing, never was permanent, no.
Well, the issue back in 2015, that's what caused.
That's what we were gonna do again in 2015, but y'all said it's a hundred and twenty days, but they said no.
Yes, ma'am, okay, thank you.
It was just a, it was just a camper last, second last, so start, just leave it down last, and they gonna come on the weekend, but then they said it's just a hundred and twenty days, and I bet y'all changed it to ninety days.
Yeah, I looked it.
Anyway, they said no, so they moved it. It was just a camper last, there wasn't nothing permanent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. McDaniel?
I don't think so, you just let me know what I got to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got two folks who because of the sign, I guess, um, expressed interest, the next call is Nathan Friday, and then a Dorothy Turner, we'll call Mr. Friday next.
Nathan?
Mr. Friday, this is Doug Courier, um, you are.
Hey, Doug, yes, sir.
You are live at the public hearing for, um, Ms. McDaniel's request, and you may make whatever statement, and then they, the board may have questions for you, if you have your computer on, please turn that down because of twenty seconds delay.
Got it, got it, okay, I'm live now?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate you guys calling me and, uh, giving me an opportunity to voice some concerns and ask some questions, I, uh, I heard a board member asking a fair amount of impact questions, and that falls in line with where I'm at, I'm a frequent user of the river, uh, flooring, fishing, canoeing, things like that. And I know just downstream of that property is, you know, kind of the last great sholliery field on the Flint River. Uh, some of you probably know the history of the sholliery and how beautiful they are, and, you know, sedimentation, uh, repairing buffer damage, things like that are really bad for their habitat. And I generally am pretty concerned with any construction along the river, kind of no matter what it is, um, once you start removing trees, change the stream bed, cause erosion, it can be a bit of a, um, you can start to get a point of no return eventually, it becomes hard to control. And, uh, you put enough sediment and sand down there, and you'll cover up root systems and, and systems for the sholliery to, to thrive. Um, another thing.
What's calling referred to, is it a spider lily?
Yes, sir, sorry, yes, yes, spider lily.
Beautiful.
Yeah. And the other thing I heard, I heard a property owner saying they would take out a creek up by the covered bridge, that creek gets, you know, near bone dry sometimes. And I just, I don't know if that's something sustainable for them, and I'm worried that that would, you know, put pressure on the people wanting to take out there right at the river, um, you know, in front of the creek mouth or, or after it. Uh, when that creek gets so low, you can't really pull boats and, and kayaks and canoes through there, so that was another concern there, is that, you know, it could be a decent plan, but, um, I don't think you'd always be able to execute that area as a takeout. Um, also, the creek has, you know, it, you put sediment in the creek, and that sediment ends up in the river, I mean, it happens just like that every time. Um, and so, uh, I'm just, you know, any, any activity in and around rivers, creeks, and any systems, um, you know, can be impactful pretty quick and can have long-term effect on these rivers. So, I'm just pretty concerned from that viewpoint.
What is your, uh, this is Commissioner Biden, I'm the one that's concerned about the environmental impact. Uh, within the last year, year and a half, the state constructed a takeout on the Hudson County side, have you ever used that?
I have, yes, sir.
What, what do you think about that as a takeout?
So.
Would that, would that, uh, I mean, there's already an impact here, uh, no matter what side of the river this business is on, uh.
Right.
Uh, my concern would be any kind of new construction, uh, along the river, or it's tributary right there. But, uh, the state, I know did an environmental study, uh, in addition to this board, I'm also on the Spurrow Bluff Advisory Committee. So, based on my knowledge there, I know that the state did an environmental study before it constructed that, and it was ultimately approved. It was about a three or four-year process, and they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars building that boat ramp. So, I'm assuming if the state approved it ultimately, that it met the state's requirements in terms of environmental impact, uh, what would you think in terms of increased use of that boat ramp? All of the business that now takes out on the Talbot County side against take out on the Hudson County side? Is that, would that be an issue?
I think it's too far, you know, I had trouble speaking to the science of the, uh, of the impact study and, and if that carry over to a new project, I would, I would almost assume, but maybe it doesn't sound like there is the same, I don't know what you'd call it, the same, um, requirement of a property owner that the state has. I would hope it would be similar, but I'm not sure that if the property owner has to do that, that painful environmental study, but I definitely would
No, I don't.
be in favor of that. In regards to the, uh, use, um, I mean, I've been there on a busy day, you know, you have to wait sometimes to get your truck backed up and to put a canoe and kayak there, uh, I don't know, it's, I'm not trying to be selfish, it's a little bit of a taxpayer dollar, go to this, and should a private business be able to benefit from that? Um, that would be, you know, a question I think I would, you know, have to ponder a little bit, but, you know. I'm not totally sure, and I have to know the numbers, right, you have to kind of know the numbers of how many people use it on any given weekend, and then how many more would be using it now? And, uh, you know, when people start parking up, would, if you put more cars in that parking lot, are they gonna start parking in odd places that, you know, road to bank, um, you, you've probably seen on, uh, in Spurrow Bluff there, where they keep having erosion problems, just on the upstream side of that, of the boat ramp. You know, from years of used vehicles down there and things like that, before anyone realized, well, going on, you know, the river takes a little bit of land every time floods right there, every time, and that sediment gets deposited, you know, downstream of the boat ramp.
Okay.
Anything else, you have questions? All right.
Where are you employed, Mr. Nathan? You don't work for State, do you?
No, sir, no, I work for, uh, working with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much for your input.
Thank y'all, yes.
All right, and the last, uh, is Dorothy Turner.
Hello?
Is this Ms. Turner?
It is.
This is Doug Courier, you and I spoke earlier today, uh, we are live, uh, and hearing you in the public hearing for Ms. McDaniel's special exception, uh, you can certainly make any comments you'd like, and then you may be have some questions, so go ahead.
Okay. Um, first of all, I'd like to say that I'm listening to mom very much, this is my mom, that's what I'm about. And, um, I'm not doing this to try to hurt her, I'm just trying to keep her from making any mistakes. And second, um, I'm speaking on my dad's behalf. And he would want me to speak the truth and to watch over my mom from her, you know, she, she won't listen to me, so, um, I'm just gonna speak, I'm speaking against her. Um, I, I understand that she's wanting to retire, and, you know, she's always talked about setting the business on the Hudson County side because, you know, it is, she, she is elder and, and she's tired. And, um, but what I'm, what I am against is, uh, who she wants to sell this property to after she builds all this stuff, and this person is constantly in her ear, giving her big dreams and everything, and ideas, and I feel like she's been manipulating it all the time since 2010. And he's even talking to her, telling her that they're, we want to put an amphitheater over there, a water park, an apartment, and cut down all the trees, all the timber, and the timber at Goat Mountain, which is also on the river. And my dad would be totally against this. Um, once he, he would not want the timber cut all over it, 'cause he loves the nature, he loves the river, he loves the outdoors, he loves being family, enjoying the river, the outdoors. He would, he would not agree with her selling this property to the person that she talks about selling it to. And I think that, uh, amphitheater and the, uh, water park, what they've been thinking about doing actually, that it would, uh, wouldn't do nothing but. about doing actual, that it would, uh, wouldn't do nothing but cause, uh, a lot of trash, noise, pollution into the river. So, I mean, I, I know she has not said anything about that, but the person that she talked about selling this to has gotten word all out and that time's not about a problem.
Well, this is Commissioner Beatty, uh, so I understand what I think you're saying. Are you saying that she made an application, uh, but as soon as it's approved and she goes through with this, uh, construction, she intends on selling this property to some other party?
That is correct.
Who is that other party?
Larry Duane Bell.
Okay. Would your mother still be involved in the business?
Um, I, I have no clue. She, I mean, she does not tell me everything. Um, I just find out because he's running his mouth around town saying he owns it. And I asked her about it and she said that he will want, um, the money comes in.
Okay.
They're, they're in something else together.
Any, anything else, Dorothy?
That, that is all. I just wanted to speak my piece for my dad. And, um, there are water lilies, uh, close by the, um, the creek where he's talking about pulling out. And, I mean, if it goes through the best part, best place for them to pull out would be, uh, the state not at fault.
Okay.
That, that is all. I just wanted to speak my piece for my dad. And, um, there are water lilies, uh, close by the, um, the creek where he's talking about pulling out. And, I mean, if it goes through the best part, best place for them to pull out would be, uh, the state not at fault.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody else?
That's it.
You have, we should say this out, but, um, you do have two pieces of correspondence, one from River Keepers, they just sent that to me today, uh, two-page letter, their comments.
Email?
Yeah, it was an email.
Yeah.
And a letter on that. And then while I was working on this presentation, there was an anonymous phone call that came into the office and that was typed up our, our secretary's. So I've got the River Keepers email, letter, and that anonymous phone call somehow. That's related, what? Oh, I've got it.
So in the, in Gordon Rogers' email, one of his points is that he calls this as commercial in nature. Should it be a rezoning to a commercial status versus a special exception?
Legally, no. I mean, there's a policy decision I guess you could make, but there's approximately eighteen different types of uses that are allowed by special exception and AR. One of them is the rock range. And that's, that's that type, that's obviously a commercial use, but it's an AR and we have others that even permitted. I mean, this business in the past, the campground itself was permitted by AR. So, no, I would say that the way our ordinances are set up is there are specific special exceptions permitted in AR and this is one of those. Now, we could have just a philosophical discussion about that, but in terms of legalistic, what the law says, this is a, well, not like words like-
Recreational facility.
It's a recreational facility.
But is the convenience store a recreational?
Well, you can imagine any, lots of recreational, I mean, there are national parks that have convenience stores and I don't think we disagree that that's, that's a recreational use. Um, you know, if you don't want to allow those type of uses with your recreational use as well, that's certainly within the purview of this planning commission to make that recommendation and, and obviously the board commissioners will make the final decision. But I think that if you think a lot of facilities similar to this, they have some sort of a store. Now you, you know, and I sort of, when she first said convenience store, I first asked, you know, where's it gonna be? You know, is this gonna be right on Woodland Road? Is it gonna be Seven Bloodman type of thing? And basically the answer is no. It's gonna be somewhat, you know, you see there's a graphic, um, that she provided where it would be on the property. And, uh, it's oriented more towards the river than towards the road.
She held to that and where you approve this?
If you approve it that way. Or if you want, and I, I would imagine the board of commissioners will want something a little more detailed, one of you residents, an architect or drawing mechanic. I think the, the board of commissioners will want to see something a little more informative than what we have now. But you could do the same thing.
Well, I'm not satisfied with her response to questions regarding environmental impact. Um, certainly everything she does on the river impacts its environment. And this was turning-
Sorry, we closed the public hearing?
Uh-
This is dirt.
This is dirt, yeah.
Yeah.
Did I close it?
Yeah.
No. Okay. Yes, we're closing the public hearing, sorry.
I mean, I pardon my getting ahead, but, um, I, I was unsatisfied in her response regarding how they don't let those canoers out. And without something more formative, uh, that minimizes the impact to the banks of the river, I think Mr. Nathan, whatever his name was, has it right, that, uh, there will be adverse consequences of the spider lily, which is endangered. It's an endangered species just south of where we're talking about.
Well, three things I'm deeply concerned about. The one, the drawing. I buy a lot of stuff from Home Depot, but I'm not buying to the drawing. Number two, is the impact of traffic coming in and out and the environmental part of it. Um, I have good friends, they're a part of the Emergency Management Agency of University County. They have to rescue people off the river quite frequently. And I'm looking at this map, I'm deeply concerned about the adverse effect and how much traffic may be in this area for a rescue to get in and out of the river on time to do their job. Uh, that's the three concerns I have with it.
Well, I, I just find it ironic, when she already has business on the Talbot County side, a crime business, from what I could tell and why she wants to-
Of course, that's her decision, that's her choice.
Quite honestly, just listening to my daughter, her ear, her husband's dead and it's a man in pictures being in the air.
She wants to, she wants to live on the Talbot County side, keep her house on the Talbot County side, build a business on the Upson County side for itself.
But-
So she separates it.
She's just, she's got somebody-
Yeah, and I, and I understand her, but I'm not clear, is her residence-
Top.
And, and where in top, I mean, is it?
It's real there, right? She lives in there.
Is she in that building?
Yes.
I thought so, yeah.
It, what it makes me sense to me, if she's got a property, just sell the property and have the money to live on and then you're not dealing with all the other stuff. You know, 'cause, I mean, what she's looking at right now would be create a lot of headaches for her to the point of selling, so somebody's, somebody's working-
There's a reason.
Yeah.
My, well, it, it-
There's, there's deeper to this.
And I, 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 that's clear. If they hear her say that she just wants peace of mind, she got a twenty-three, beautiful twenty-three acre lot on the Upson County side, places the river built out, live the rest of your life and please. Again, my biggest issue is the potential and most likely probable negative impact on the river, which is, you know, the river's endangered as well. It is on a very short list of the most endangered river ecosystems in the nation. The Flint River is right at the top of the list, like number four. And, uh, I, I, this is a half-baked plan at best and I can't, I can make a decision, it just won't be in her favor.
So, Mr. Turner, would you like to give your staff a look?
Certainly. Certainly move it along with the length of time it would be taken.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, there's a little issue in her application, whether it's twenty-seven or twenty-four acres, but, you know, according to the county, it's a twenty-three point nine five acre. Um, this goes back, you know, the predecessor of this was the campground on this side that was approved in 2015. Uh, there was the issue about somebody living in an RV and also, um, not paying occupation tax for the length of time that campground had been there.
So, dollar for matter of fact.
Those were remunerated in 2015. Um, the proposal is, as you heard, for a two thousand one hundred and sixty square foot store, two sixty-four split, square foot bathrooms, and a three hundred and thirty-six square foot paddle house. Uh, the zoning in the area is primarily AR. Obviously, there's a lot and it's heavily wooded in this area, the river is part of the border, uh, boat launch itself is part of the border. And then you do have the, the Earl's Road neighborhood on the other side of Woodland Road. Uh, there are general review standards that both the planning commission and the board of commissioners must use to evaluate this project. In terms of the infrastructure, uh, you heard earlier, and this was actually part of the requirements back in 2015, that the septic tank and the water be put in. However, in those conditions, there was no time frame. So, you know, this, she has chosen that this is the time to put those in. Um, there are some in our plant, in our comprehensive plan, there are some policies that deal with this, identifying and protecting environmental sensitive areas, protecting enhancing community unique qualities, developing design, landscaping, lighting, signage and scale, which address the value of the community, uh, the preserve and the rural character of the community. So you can interpret those relative to this project in a number of ways. Then in terms of those criteria, I do the, uh, the overall valuation here, um, with the information we have, while we certainly have had, uh, potential side of the impacts, there's nothing clear that we have that would, this would be a, uh, totally detrimental to the area and to some degree, all it is, is moving it from one side of the river to the other. Staff recommends approval. And of course, you know, that's where you are, the planning commission is in its position to determine what it wants to do. We've already gone over a lot of these graphics, but I'll bring them back up. This is the aerial, it shows you the area of the property in question. You can certainly see the current development over here, uh, neighborhood over there. Boat ramp is pretty visible right in there. Uh, and then certainly, um, the flood plain, that explains in part at least where her buildings, you recall that her buildings are up in this area here, this certainly explains it. This was the best we had for a design of the project. Uh, some photos, a few from the other side. And then the rest of these, you have additional photos in your packet. This is a shortened list, but this gives you the shoreline where the campground is across the river. That is the Upson County side we're looking at. There's a series of maybe a couple dozen, I'm not sure exactly, campsites, tables and benches. There we go. Other great she was talking about. And this is a really bad picture of the boat ramp, but it, from her property, that's what it looks like. It goes up a hill and so you can't see the paved surface. It's a little bit better in this photo.
Great picture.
I was seeing her in there, though.
And that concludes my presentation, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion?
With the present information we have, we could, I don't see how, however, we could make a, make a motion to approve it because we don't have a full plan of action of what kind of, I don't know that we could completely deny it or completely, we definitely couldn't approve it, you know, uh, without having a full plan of impact, of development, design, location, sites and all that kind of stuff. Then it, then, then it would be a situation that you, you would have a legitimate, uh, okay, I could approve this, but as it is now, I don't know that this, we don't have enough information that you could approve it. I don't know that we have reason enough to deny it.
Well, I disagree with that. Uh, I think the fact that we don't have sufficient information to approve it, our only recourse is to deny it.
Or say that we cannot approve it until we have further information, that's what I'm saying.
That would certainly be communicated back to the, uh-
It should not be approved on present, in the present condition, in a sense of what I'm saying.
Yeah. I, I, I would definitely want more information, especially from an engineer or something as to the impact on the river.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I third it.
All unfair?
Aye.
Aye, in the present conditions, motion to deny.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
That was your name, Mr. Beatty. And of course, for the sake of the public as well as yourselves, this will go to the, um, Board of Commissioners meeting of October thirteenth. So for purposes of our audience as well as here, October thirteenth will be, uh, and that will be advertised with the yellow sign in the annual newspaper for the October thirteenth date with a recommendation of the House of the Planning Committee.
Uh, caveat on this, um, this is the first time we've really developed, had an issue with development on the river. Uh, is there a need for an examination of development on the river in terms of impact and maybe strengthening the rules regarding that so that somebody doesn't come in with the insufficient information to, what do you think, uh, Madam Chairwoman?
Yep.
We didn't, we didn't have enough information that you could have, might not-
I think there's a lot of, a lot of other pieces that could be involved.
Well, one of my concerns is, is there's no apparent requirement for an engineering study or settlement runoff study or any kind of study in terms of, it's gonna be right there on the river. And I, I think Mr. Nathan, whatever his name was, got it right. He can't turn a spider's hole that close to the river and not impact it. So maybe that's something we need to explore in the future.
Take a step or something to, to look at and understand more of what, what's out there, what, I don't know if there's other requirements on different parts.
Yeah, well, that's the interesting in-
But I think we did something we definitely need to protect.
The Spurrow River, I think there's a subtle meaning of that. Because, um, they're usually currently arguing both that wanna do something, that they might consider an impact on the river.
All right. Um, moving on to four B, application for special exception, SPX twenty twenty dash zero five, Stephanie C. and Kevin J. Fowler, five hundred Baker, Brooklyn. C. and Kevin J. Fowler, 500 Baker Britt Road, parcel 043002F. It's a very useful recreational vehicle as a residence to do home construction. You will open the public hearing?
The only call we've got on this one is the applicant. I guess we'll try your cell number first, that's the first one on the application.
This is Stephanie.
This is Doug Courier. You are live at the public hearing for your case for the planning commission, if you'd like to make any statements, that would be fine, and then the commissioners may have a question for you. You've got the floor.
Okay, those things are made, but I am prepared for any questions.
Okay. Do anybody have questions?
Yeah, I do. This is Commissioner Bailey. Actually, I'm one of your neighbors. I reside at.
Nice to meet you.
440 Baker Britt Road. What exactly is your plan, construction plan, in terms of dates and whatnot? My understanding of your special exception request is you want to live in that really fancy mobile home, why you constructing a house. When do you think you're going to be finished building your house and parking the mobile home, real fancy, it's beautiful, excellent, on the side?
Well, thank you.
Yeah, on the side somewhere. When do you think that, what's your timeframe on that?
Well, as of right now, we have pulled the driveway permit, septic and wall permit. Obviously, they've all been inspected and approved. And as far as if you're referring to when we're going to break ground on this footer, I'm not sure if the board members here are aware that my husband is currently deployed or not. But I'm just waiting at this point for him to return and for us to discuss breaking ground with the lender and also with our builder.
What's the, okay.
So, are you living in the travel trailer now?
Yes, I might, yes.
Do you have any idea how long he might be deployed?
You should be home at the beginning of October. That is just dependent on the effects of COVID right now and travel.
Is he in the military or a private contractor?
He's retired military lieutenant colonel from the Army and is currently contract work, yes, with the government in Afghanistan.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, I just, yeah, that was what I'm understanding, but when you say deployed, that has a whole different context to it in my world, so.
For what he does, he is currently deployed, yes.
Okay, I understand.
Any other questions, Spur? Okay, I don't think anybody has any other questions, so we will let you go. Are you watching?
I mean, do you even have a tentative timeframe? We want to be in this house by April of 2021, or, I mean, you have no idea?
I discussed it with Mr. Courier and a couple of other people in planning and zoning or in the building department. With, currently right now with COVID, I'm sure you guys are aware of the effects on the availability of construction materials and backorder issues. So, you know, we understand you guys have a specific timeframe that we should be requesting. So, at minimum, we're requesting a 12-month on this. My parents are my neighbor. Their house is completed, but another house on Baker Britt, I'm sure you're aware, started before my parents home, and is still under construction because they're waiting for materials. So, just with COVID, we just don't, I can't give you specific dates right now.
Okay.
Now, but also in consideration with my husband's assets from the country, that also makes it a little bit more difficult with, you know, discussion and decisions on dates and timeframes.
Do you think you will be able to inform the board in October? Or when your husband, I guess, comes home for a little while or visits?
Specifically, what would you like to be informed on?
Well, when you, I don't know if you are aware or not, but this board in the last year or so went through a process of writing the ordinance and coming up, formulating all of the restrictions of folks living in mobile homes. Travel trailers, mobile homes, yeah. Not mobile homes, you're right, travel trailers.
RVs, yes.
RVs, RV living. And I think what we ultimately resolved was to allow an exception for the construction of a home with a six-month issuance and the issuance of one extension for an additional six months if you can't get your house built.
Okay.
So.
So, under the.
What I'm meaning is, you can't give us.
Do you think legitimately I could have a house built in six months if I were to have footer set tomorrow?
Yes.
Like, immediately?
Godfather right here, he says yes.
In six months, I could have a house built?
It's doable, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know about building materials, I haven't seen any empty shelves at home big enough.
There are, there are.
Well, trusses don't confirm home, either.
There are availability issues with some materials, you know? Most of it's partially treated stuff that's available issues.
Well, I guess, the point I'm trying to make, and I guess the point I'm trying to get to, I'm not trying to make a point, I'm trying to get to a point. This board can't render a decision with the absence of any information other than I would like to live in an RV during the construction of my home, but I can't tell you how long it's going to be. Or.
Well, I think that's.
Based on weather conditions.
So, I don't, there's no way for me to specifically say a date that a house completed. I'm not the only person that could not give you a specific date.
Okay. Can you tell me this, have you matter-of-factly decided to build a home on that lot?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not used to living, I'd like to say that I'm not used to living in an RV. I'm used to living in a house that's worth more than a half million dollars. So, it's not like this is a luxury for me. It's just a position I've been placed in due to some COVID restrictions and the work that my husband does. So, I've just placed on my own property next to my parents, where my husband felt I would take this while he was gone. So, yes, our full intention is to build on this property. We're not here to bring down anyone's property values. We're here to be, you know, upstanding citizens that pay our taxes and do right by all of our neighbors and everyone around us.
Okay. I'm curious, your lot is in an old subdivision. Did you, was there a protective covenant attached to your deed?
I'm not sure. I was asked that when originally approached by the building department, but I'm honestly not sure.
Okay.
So, all of this was finance and my husband's name, and I guess that he is not here, so I'm doing the best I can in this announcement.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions at all.
Okay, I think we're good. I don't think there's any other questions. Thank you for allowing us to ask some questions. If you are online, then you can hear the rest of our discussion, but we'll hang up now so that there's not an echo, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
And there are no other people requesting to speak, so we can close the public hearing.
So, we'll close the public hearing. Can we get your staff report?
Absolutely, very brief. Again, you've heard that it is a couple, the address is 500 Baker Britt Road. The provision in the ordinance for the AR states that for, by special exception, a manufactured home or travel trailer for temporary use at construction site meeting the following development standards, and then there's a whole list of standards that are in the ordinance. This is a 10-acre site. The zoning is AR, as is most of this area. There is a floodplain at the back of it that is 10-mile creek. As we referenced earlier, there are review standards by which these type of proposals are to be reviewed, all special exceptions. Looking at facilities, again, part of the process is that, and this, I think, is built into the ordinance, sort of Commissioner Bailey's concern, is that you have to have, not only have the well permitted and septic tank permitted, they have to be installed and operational, and you have to pull the bolted in permit. So, you get about as much a financial commitment from somebody as you can when you allow this RV living. So, I think the ordinance is set up to make sure that, or get those best assurances as possible. Again, generally speaking, in terms of nuisances, impacts on adjacent properties and existing uses, I don't think there will be generally any negative impacts. This is a temporary use, it is permitted by the ordinance. This is a regular thing. This is probably out on my fifth or sixth since I've been here, so this is a fairly routine request. Of course, we do have the exception here is the RV, this is an after the fact, the RV showed up first, and normally they wait, so that is a little bit different. Staff does recommend approval, again, based on the statements, you know, this is temporary, this is a traditional thing that we do, it's in the ordinance, and actually, it's been longer than the rest of your RV ordinance. It predates, you know, changes. There are conditions required, these are those conditions in the ordinance. There are two of them that you affect as the planning commission, so we need you to make some final decisions or at least recommendations to the board of commissioners. One is that you heard requests for 12 months, so you may either need to, you know, endorse that request or not. And then the development plan was included, you are instructed by the ordinance to approve or deny, or at least to consider that development plan. This is just the aerial, you see the green area is the floodplain. They're building considerably further up the lot, so they're nowhere near the floodplain. And I know this is very difficult to see, and it's in your packet, so maybe you can see it better there, but you've got, this is the plan that we need you to endorse or not. Here's the home, the RV is placed behind it, the well is already here, septic here, and then you've got the distances, the setbacks, which is certainly far, see, the minimum setbacks required. These are some of the photos from the gate sign. There is the well. And the RV is up. And that concludes my presentation. So, we do have to ask you to do two things, is recommend to the board of commissioners a length of time, their request was 12 months. If you look at the ordinance, administratively, once you have allowed whatever, or the board of commissioners has set the amount of time, administratively, the zoning administrator is allowed to give up the 12-month extension to that. That's just to inform you that what the ordinance says.
Any questions?
I have no issues. I will say this, you know, this is ironic, because this property is also under a protective covenant that precludes this very thing. That's when I asked her if she was aware of, I know we're under one, I mean, right down the road. And I know that all of this property was originally, you know, a brick manor or something, I forget what it's called. But again, the issue is who enforces that? So, and there is no institution to enforce it, so it's a wink and a nod in terms of protective covenant. But it doesn't bother me at all, as one of our neighbors. I just, I don't want to look at it for more than 12 months.
I think so, yeah. I recommend we approve it for 12 months.
Second, yes, second. Based on your recommendation, and also, we have eight items of conditions of approval, and I certainly think that's adequate, a man who's a veteran and he's still serving.
I agree. And this does include approval of the site plan or the development plan?
So, you're second with?
That's what's in place, I mean, we're not, well, I'll.
So, your motion includes the eight items?
That's what's in place. We've already approved, that's attached automatically.
All right, that's ordinance.
Yeah, that's ordinance.
Oliver?
Unanimous?
All right, other business, I guess that's why you're here.
You're right, we were sorry. I'm sorry, I'm Marsha Callaway Ingram, and I thank you for having us here. Actually, we were invited last month to come back. I'm here about Mulberry Road property. I was surprised to hear on the radio that it had been resolved. I was not aware of that. I have been offered nothing to sign or no trade in agreement. I did meet with my brother, as you asked, we spent two hours this Saturday after the meeting, talking and trying to get this worked out, and at the conclusion, he told me that he really didn't need it anymore, that he had withdrawn his request. And so, I suppose by that, he thought that your decision of last time no longer applied. I am of a different opinion, however. It sounded very solid and very firm to me that there was one thing we could do, and that was work it out, or you had already made up your mind and made your ruling. And so, I guess simply, I'm here to ask you tonight to stand by your word and uphold your ordinances. There is no resolution, and I'm very sorry to have to announce that. It makes me physically ill to have to announce that, but that is what it is.
Okay, the reason for his withdrawal, he was going to do something to, that would take him out of being out of compliance with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, the floodplain of the structure was going.
could choose from, and I think it was an option that he didn't like at first, and he decided that maybe it was a better option. And, um, again, I don't know specific details, I think I understand it basically, is that at some point he will carve out two acres around, uh, the building in question, as well as enough room for the home. Um, I think Meg had actually put the distances in, that if he'd made that choice, where everything would have to be. So, that, there was one of the problems, was two primary structures on the lot, that would eliminate if he carved out the two separate acres, and this is AR zone, so you can have a minimum two acres. That would take care of the, the fact that there is the special events center and home on one lot, so that issue would go away. Uh, then in terms of the rest of the issues, um, his plan is to build a home in front of the barn, and that would therefore become the principal structure on that two acre lot. The barn would become an accessory structure, so then the setback issue goes away, because it's, it's required to be 30 feet if it's a primary structure, and the five, if it's a secondary or a accessory structure. And then, in terms of the disputed room, uh, the addition that's away from, uh, the neighbor's property, uh, and we've talked about this recently, that would become a, um, guest quarters. And as you know, the guest quarters provision in the ordinance is very broad, so, at the last time we had a discussion, that was his change to his plan, so obviously, if he follows through on all that, he will meet the requirements of the, uh, ordinances, you know, and that would solve the issues that we had since that time.
But all we have is, that's what his plan is, he hasn't actually presented a, this is my presented direction that I'm gonna do it, and put the plan in process.
Well, there's an illness in the family that he has to deal with now, and the family may have more information than I do, we just heard through the grapevine that there's some health issues there, and I'm sure that those have delayed some things, but, no, we have not been presented with, uh, anything that indicates that the property's been carved, the two acres been carved out.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, at our meeting, he said that he was going to put an office there, well, an office is not an exclusion or exception, excuse me, is not an exception that I don't find. Also, you mentioned the guest quarters, while it may be brought in some areas, the way I read it, it's very narrow in others, it must be located behind a residence, an existing residence, there is no existing residence.
Right.
So, therefore, we're still in a bit of a pickle.
Right, this is very often, for instance, the woman, the case we just had, she was in violation from before we started this case, she put the RV there before she ever went through this process, we didn't tell her you have to move the RV, and then if you get permission, you can move it back. We worked with her and said, let's see what this board says, and then the Board of Commissioners, and we will get you to the point where you now are in compliance. She's halfway there, if she gets the same answer from the Board of Commissioners that she got here, something that today, right now, is a violation, will become into compliance, and that's just working with the folks that we.
Would you, would you, would, go ahead, absolutely.
No, I'm sorry. One of the things that, with this, is the barn is, if not touching the line, overhanging the property line.
I have information from my staff that it's five feet, five inches, that's all I can tell.
The foundation is five feet.
I have not measured it.
Yeah, the fi, the foundation is, but the.
The overhang still is.
The overhang.
It's a five foot overhang on the building.
It's about a five foot, it's probably, yeah, about that.
He had pictures last time down the line with the, with the line showing, you could see the.
Yeah.
What, what it says in the, in the, in the ordinance, 15 barns, not exceeding 45 feet in height, used for storage or sheltering of equipment, supplies, or livestock. This proposal on the, the new permit that he, he went and got, has 1,200 heated square feet, it's got 1.5 baths, it's got concrete flooring, it's got mechanical, it's got electrical, and in the description, it's gonna be listed as an office. None of this is a barn, in my mind, that is used for sheltering of equipment, supplies, or livestock. This is a field of dreams, if you build it, they will come, it's built in six months, two years, three years, ah, somebody's gonna move in there, that's the way it's gonna work, that's the way I see it.
I think we could avoid all this, you made your decision last time, and I think to allow a, a revoking of your request for a variance, to take it back, is a slippery slope that you may not want to start going down, because you obviously handle a lot of these cases, and I want you to start allowing somebody to take it back after you said no.
He, he's already been issued a permit?
Yes.
Yes. All right, but let me ask, let me ask you this question, and, uh, got me down this road for protocol goes. If I'm not mistaken, would this board agree that no action would be taken until we had?
End of writing.
End of writing by both parties, before anything would go further?
Well, that's true.
You know, or, or another building permit to be issued, it, there had to be some resolve there. So, how does that procedure work, where you then would get a permit and start running up?
Cause it's no longer a variance, the only reason why he was before this board is because there was a variance case, if he had decided to pursue what he's pursuing now, without taking the, uh, the first attempted step that he changed his mind, would have never come to this board at all. So, when he withdrew, the mechanism that brought it to you, then it's not before the board.
So, right now, right now, the issue's been removed from us, is what you're basically saying, because he's removed his request of a variance, so then it falls back to a legal issue with y'all. Is that what you're saying?
But you made it, and it was very clear and specific, and Madam Kinley has just spoken what that was, it was, it was do this or that, and this didn't get done, so that should be, of course.
Well, and I will, I will say this as clearly as I can as the zoning administrator, it is my opinion as zoning administrator, that once the variance was withdrawn, then the jurisdiction of the planning commission went away. If an attorney wants to say that I'm wrong, then they can do that, but that's my interpretation, and, you know, we've done that usually with rezonings, you usually get withdrawal with rezonings when they know it's going to lose, although we don't get that too often either, but that's my decision as the zoning administrator, and.
What is it currently done now, what's his current plan?
Well, again, the current plan was, uh, it said carve out two acres, build a house, and then make that office into the, uh, guest quarters.
So, you won't maybe just push it back?
I, I don't, I want him to be reasonable, I don't want him to encroach upon my property, he has more than I do, he could certainly have backed it up where it should have been in the first place, and I told him that long before he got this far, I asked him three or four times before he built it, to date it, double check, it's not, the setups aren't, the plaque that you have in that package clearly says that the barn that was there before must be removed, and that was because the property was divided, putting that barn too close to the, the line, and so before the new plaque was approved, it said that barn had to be removed. I don't want to do that to him, I offered to trade him some property, but he didn't like the property I offered to trade for. I don't really want it that close, no, but like you said, I don't wish him ill, I would work with him, I tried, twice I offered, but he said that would never happen, and he bulldogged ahead, like he always does, so that's where I am, you have ordinances, I've asked you to please enforce them.
Wow. Is he in violation, is he in potential violation now?
Yes, I think he's in violation right now, in that he's got two principal structures, now the barn, is that accessory?
I would say that the barn is. The structure should be a barn without a concrete floor, a pole barn does not have a concrete floor, heating and air, and bathrooms, at least, the barn I own doesn't.
Our building official would disagree, he says he's seen barns with all kinds of fancy stuff, that's still barns.
I mean, there'd be horse barns, that's, that you put these half million dollar horses in, and they're gonna have.
I, I still go back to his original permit that he pulled to build that barn, said no concrete floor.
Yeah.
No bathrooms, no heating and air, and no sides.
That's true.
If I remember off the top of my head, those four things, yes.
And then he violated.
And so far, it's got all four of those things, plus about six more.
Well, so he came in for a new permit?
No, but that was before he came in for a new permit.
Yes, you're right.
He was in violation of the first permit before he came in for the second.
Eventually, yes, he was.
You know, was the second permit approved?
Yes.
Okay.
That was an administrative.
However, I do believe that second permit was for an office, and again, an office is not an approved accessory use.
Well, it's always legal recourse. And in terms of enforcement, you and a cry, um, I, I, I hear one, I, I hear you and a cry, so.
Well, of course, if I don't like this situation at all. You've made a decision, the board did, going back on your own decisions is a very slippery slope, I, you will have many others to come after this.
You don't make a decision?
We, we made the decision that he could, the two parties had to come to an agreement in writing, that they both brought back to this board, that would resolve the issue of two acres.
Right.
Whether he bought two acres from her, they swapped acreage, however, they gave him two acres, the structure.
Right.
That's where we left it.
So, there was no disapproval?
There was no disapproval of the.
Then he comes back the next day and withdraws his variance.
Okay.
So, that undoes, that's what Doug said, that undoes what we said that night, as the both parties have to come to some kind of agreement, and come back to us.
Okay.
So, he comes back and pulls a second building permit to replace the first one, that in turn puts.
Well, perhaps court of law is the best place for this, at this point.
That'd be it.
This.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
407, I promise you're, you know what, if you would've done 407 for the RV, that would not be an issue in front of you as well.
I remember that.
If you used 407, as it is written, it would save three hour meetings. Thank you for your time.
You have a one plea.
Pardon me?
Have a one plea.
Thank you.
Who are you, sir?
My name is George Ingram.
George.
This is gonna be a court.
They've been, they, listen, this has been, what has been going on for years.
It has. All right, I, I make the motion that we move amateur radio, gateways, and tiny homes to next month's meeting.
I say that.
Now, I do have one question, and I know we haven't even started on these, I keep listing all three, would you like to, like, just have one agenda and work on that one, or do you want all three on the agenda?
I think for right now, let's keep them all three on there, and keep plugging away at them in small bits, otherwise, we get six months down the road, and we only have one that we have fully started.
All right, at this point, I only know for sure of one new case coming in next month as a subdivision, so I, now, not that there are other applications floating around out there.
Which, which one of these three issues is probably the easiest to unravel?
Three issues, in, in terms of your cases, Ty?
No, in terms of these.
Amateur gateway and tiny.
Tiny halls, radio towers, probably the radio towers, right?
Radio towers.
And I knew that you listed these in order of, uh, insignificance, radio towers, gateway, and tiny halls.
I would say they're probably in the order.
In the order that they're in, yeah.
That's how, that's how you get an elephant, uh, one bite at a time.
One bite at a time.
Unless that elephant keeps growing.
Yeah, who knows?
Can't forget the man.
Okay, um, any other comments, input?
I thought I said to my daughter.
Doug, you have anything else?
No man, no announcements or issues.
All right, no objections, we are adjourned.
He, he keeps getting excited with that.
Yeah, well, that, that's true. That is true.
That's true.
And until I tell you, we are still live on.
Well, I'd like to.
We still live.
Do you know him?
Still, I mean.
I'd like him to do that.
No, no.
Hey, 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 hey. We're still alive.
We're still live.
Do what? Do what?
Yeah, I'm still up, I'm gonna make the phone call to Brad, and he'll turn off the lights.
I can tell you one thing, Catherine ain't gonna have it back to her RV.
Hey Brad, this is Doug Currier, go ahead and turn off the lights.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, sir. Now, we don't know exactly when it'll turn off, so, but it'll turn off.
All righty, man.
Money falling at work.
Well, it's quiet, no signal.
There you go.
I guess we're off now.
So, you were saying that probably I caught that dog. Yeah, I, I, I was listening unaware of what the issue was.
We're talking this?
Doug sent an email out.
We're talking about this?
I just, I, I.
I'm probably with mom and father.
Oh, that, that's not before.
I mean, somebody might say, you could hit them, and they could see us.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, as long as she, she's definitely a fling, it's, it's great.